No problem. We will now begin the public hearing portion of the meeting. The way this process will go tonight is we have four land use items scheduled. We will call for each item in turn. We will then ask for those wishing to speak in favor of each item. For those wishing to speak in favor, you will each have up to 10 minutes to speak. We ask that you please state your name and address for the record. You will, we will have a timer, and if you hear that timer go up, we kindly ask, go off, excuse me. We kindly ask that you wrap up your thoughts. Following from that, we will ask for those wishing to speak in opposition to each item. The same process will follow for those wishing to speak in opposition. And then following from that, at the pleasure of the commission, a three-minute rebuttal can be provided for the applicant. Are there any questions about how this public hearing will commence tonight? This morning, excuse me. It's early. Yes, ma'am. We will have to add, if you want to just go ahead and approve the agenda, we can do that. We'll have to add number five to the agenda, which is an alcohol beverage license renewal application for rural food, number 28.
I have any opposed. Well, I have that number five.
Okay, great, thank you.
Sorry about that.
Thank you for letting us do that. Okay, with that being said, we'll go ahead and open the public hearing. Our first item is a rezoning request from Nell Garland, 1220 Coffin Road, Tacoa, parcel 021D005. The property is currently zoned as agricultural intensive. The proposed action to be taken is to rezone 4.05 acres to agricultural residential. This was reviewed by the planning commission, and they recommend approval as requested. Are there any questions or comments from the Board of Commissioners? Okay, all right. Is there anyone wishing to speak in favor of this item? Anyone wishing to speak in favor? Is there anyone wishing to speak in opposition to this item? Is there anyone wishing to speak in opposition? All right, the land use public hearing for item number one is closed. Item number two is a variance request from Wayne and Janice Seegers, Joe Rider Road, Tacoa, parcel 018B062C. The property is currently zoned as residential single. The proposed action to be taken is to grant a variance to the rear yard setback of six feet for a total four-foot rear yard setback for the placement of an accessory structure. Planning commission has reviewed and recommendation is to approve as requested. Are there any questions or comments from the Board of Commissioners? Okay, all right. Is there anyone wishing to speak in favor of this request? Is there anyone wishing to speak in favor? Is there anyone wishing to speak in opposition to this request? Is there anyone wishing to speak in opposition? All right, the land use public hearing for item number two is closed. Item number three is a variance request from Edith Kimsey Youngblood Estate, 283 Easy Street, Tacoa, parcel T06074. The property is currently zoned as residential single. The proposed action to be taken is to grant a lot-size variance of less than one acre for 0.31 acres and to grant a variance to the front and side yard setback of 10 feet for the existing accessory structures on site. Planning commission has reviewed and the recommendation is to approve the item as requested. Are there any questions or comments from the Board of Commissioners? Okay, is there anyone wishing to speak in favor of this request? Anyone wishing to speak in favor? Is there anyone wishing to speak in opposition to this request? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? The land use public hearing for item number three is closed. Item number four is a rezoning request from AK New Ventures LLC, 125 Skyline Drive, Tacoa, parcel T37055 and T37058. The property is currently zoned as residential single. The proposed action to be taken is to rezone from residential single to planned unit development. The planning commission has reviewed the item and the recommendation is to table the item. Are there any questions or comments from the Board of Commissioners? Okay, is there anyone wishing to speak in favor of this request? Yes, sir, if y'all will come up and give your names and address for the record, please.
Good morning. My name is Jeremy Harrowood. I represent AK New Ventures. Mr. Shaw, you're with me?
No, thank you. First of all, I want to apologize. We weren't able to make the last meeting. I had a family emergency. We value the chance to engage with the community and the Board of Commissioners. We know there were several questions brought up by citizens, so we'd like to take a second to answer those specifically. The first one involved stormwater management. We are committed to meeting exceeding environmental standards for stormwater detention and retention. We have a civil engineer, John Phillips, who's worked with the city before, and he has guaranteed us to comply with EPD regulations. There were concerns about traffic and driveway concerns. We'd like to start by saying the initial phase of 24 to 30 townhomes will not significantly increase traffic, in our opinion. There is a future hotel. We also believe that will generate minimal traffic. Commercial spaces will not also be typical of high-traffic nuisance such as vape shops or gas stations. We will look for more, like, urgent care, something like that, what other community needs. Someone asked about the hotel development, like what type of hotel? We are committed to selecting a premium hotel brand, like a Hilton or Marriott, with 80 to 90 rooms. We support the county's decision and highlight hotel development as crucial for tourism and business growth also. Housing types and resident concerns. The townhomes we will build will meet the demand for high-quality housing with two or three bedrooms. There will be no subsidized housing at all. They asked if we would be renting or selling. We are focused on selling the townhomes. We are open to rentals, but they will be at 1,800 a month or higher, which would hopefully bring better families and things like that. Density in dwelling. We want to ensure that under the PUD or multi-rezoning, we are open to any conditions set by the county. Lastly, we believe that the, someone asked about the sewer capacity system. The initial assessment shows the sewer system can support the development, and after review, we will conduct some further review. We will be conducting more in-depth tests. Another question concerning was if the hotel is not developed, do we have any plans to build 165 units or 150 units? We have no intention of doing that, as the PUD zoning would require us to have commercial as well as residential, so we would not be asking to build basically a whole neighborhood. That's not our intention at all. The reason we're going for the PUD is the PUD zoning has been very successful in Georgia. It supports mixed-use development, job creation, and economic growth. It streamlines the approval process, significantly reducing the time and effort required for repetitive rezoning applications. The reason we chose this location is the site's central location, the heart of the city, along Big A Road corridor, checks all the boxes for PUD zoning. It's a prime position, makes it ideal for mixed-use development, supporting the city's long-term growth goals. Anything else?
There may be additional questions.
Yes, I do have a question. So, this will be the second PUD that we've reviewed and voted on. So, which one of the two properties right now would be the priority, the bypass or this property?
As it states now, the bypass is set to start hopefully in the next three weeks. We actually are at the point where we've got a contractor, he's got to pull the final request for the land disturbance, and then that project's going to start in the next, hopefully the very first week of January. So, that will start first.
Okay. And then the traffic concerns, like I looked at the maps that are in the package. Is the primary entrance to the property going to be off Skyline Drive? Is that the proposed primary entrance?
As of now, the townhomes are actually built close to Addington, so we're thinking that the beginning of the project, there'll be an entrance at Addington that will be used mostly, and then as the project grows, there will be an entrance at Skyline also.
All right, and the hotel on this property versus the hotel on the bypass, because that was mentioned in the same presentation on the bypass, like, what's the thought there? Like, do you think the county can really withstand two hotels, two new hotels, or which one would have the priority as far as the hotel goes?
I think originally the hotel, sorry, this is Mr. Shaw.
So, for the hotel, the bypass is not ready yet with the development going on in the city. And if you see any Holiday Inn Express or Hilton brand, they like to be within the city or near the, all the businesses are there. So, with that said, this in our opinion, and we did have a preliminary talks with the Hilton group, and they suggest that this checks all the boxes. If that gets approved right now, it's on residential zoning, so they cannot comment on that. But for hotel, it requires, like, you know, nearby restaurants, and it's closer to businesses. So, in our opinion, I don't see any other location than, so to answer your question, this location stands out than the bypass for the, in terms of the hotel.
Okay. Yeah, I just wanted to clarify, I appreciate that. Thank you.
Any other questions?
I guess one of the main concerns for me about an entrance on Addington Drive is that the road is very narrow, and having to exit out of Addington Drive onto Big A Road before the red light has, I have some concerns about that. You know, I'm not a traffic study expert, but I am a citizen that I want to, and I'm elected by the folks here in this room to make sure we get some questions answered. And, you know, before we go forward with this project, I want to say thank you for your investment in our community. Most of us know that you have purchased three properties in Stevens County, one in the city, two in the county, so thank you for your investment here, and I think you know that we support you because of how we went, you know, what we did two years ago to get the PUD started on the bypass. For me, I have some traffic concerns to where I would want a traffic study performed. It would seem to me that you would just have one entrance off Skyline, and because you can exit out onto Skyline, a lot of folks could turn left and go to middle school and elementary school, some could turn right and go onto Big A. Where if they turn onto Addington, I think with that narrow road and then the entrance onto Big A, we hear a lot of wrecks at my business all day long from people trying to merge through five lanes of traffic. And you could get a traffic study, and they would say, you know what, Commissioners, there's no problem. And then I could say, all right, we got that question answered. So, for me, right now, that's one of my, that's one of my concerns about saying yes to development until we get a traffic study.
Okay, so I appreciate your question, and I'm glad you brought this question. And let's look at the property, and basically, the way we are proposing this, the good part is it has two accesses, one from Skyline and one from Addington. Now, if the hotel does come on Addington Corner like we are showing there, that in my opinion, that is the best development rather than have any other commercial development like a gas station or a liquor store or anything which brings constantly every hour in and out traffic. With the nice development hotel, if you can see statistically anywhere in Jersey or anywhere in the nation, it brings a very minimal traffic, because most of them are corporate people. Either they checked in late and go out early in the morning once the things are done. So, that is the reason a hotel seems a perfect fit in terms of traffic, and we're not trying to bring a lot of housing. And in our initial phase, we want to test-market how the townhome project works. With the Christian, we looked at it here, and that is something which this city is missing. And you don't have a good quality two-to-three-bedroom homes in terms of townhomes. So, and that has access for adding, I know that narrow road and everything, but again, we will be happy if you want to go in detail. We'll hire a traffic study for future. You can put that as a condition for subject to final approval, you know, that is not a problem. But overall, we see all those angles, and in our opinion, any commercial component you bring, which, what brings less traffic? And if you look, this Salsbury's Hotel, which in your feasibility report also states, it's much needed, because right now, the city is losing all the revenues and lack of tourism just because of that, because people don't want to drive to La Vania and Clarksville to go and stay there, you know. So, by putting a hotel component, I think it's good for the community, and that brings very less traffic. Is there anything else, sir, sir? We can talk about that?
So, in your opinion, from a hotel perspective, what's a rough timeline? Do we think that's a 12-month, a 24-month, 36-month? Like, what does that look like in your opinion?
Chris, here's where I'm going to answer, and I want to be very transparent, and you can see our, you know, experience with Christian and Brittany so far. We don't like to overpromise anything, you know, and just to get things uprooted.
Sure.
If we like the project and idea, and if it is the right zoning, we like to focus on it and do all our efforts to start that. Now, for a hotel, I don't have a direct experience, but I'm an investor with Peachtree Hotel Group in Atlanta, who has hotels nationwide. So, with that said, that process ideally takes two years. Once you start the zoning approved and once you start the planning. Because it's not like you guys approve or the developer approves. It's all on Hilton and IHG. They have to satisfy, they have to go through, a lot of, they have to bring their executives to make sure, because they want to put something which stands out their reputation also. They don't want the hotel to come here and with 60, 70% occupancy. That doesn't make sense. So, that's a little bit three-to-four-month process. And the good part is the county has spent, I think, more than $20,000 in these detailed studies. It looks like that checks everything, so that process should go fast. So, once that happens, then 12-to-14-month timeline to build and everything, then all the furniture and fixtures, which is another three months, so we can easily say approximately two years. And if I'm right, on the feasibility report, page 10, it says that hotel in Tacoa should open sometime in 2027. So, that's the way I think we should be targeting that. If we get today, these things are approved, and we can start meticulous planning going forward, I don't see any reason we should not achieve that.
Okay, thank you for that. I appreciate it.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Michelle.
Is there anyone else wishing to speak in favor of this request? Come up and give your name and address for the record.
Good morning. My name's Brittany Ivy. I live at 3966 Highway 184 North in Tacoa. And you know that I'm the president and CEO of Stevens County Development Authority, and we have been working with Bobby for a couple of years and on a couple of different things. And I just want to clarify some things that were said at the previous meeting, just so we're all clear, that this is his first attempt to rezon this property. Everyone else who wanted to rezon Addington did not own it. They were just trying to get it rezoned before they purchased it. He went a step ahead and went ahead and invested and purchased, and now he's trying to rezon his property, which is totally within his right to do. Some other things too, just so we're all kind of clear, the PUD on the bypass, he's holding that acreage for a potential hotel, but we all know the community would have to grow significantly for that to make sense. Nowhere in that PUD plan does he give a timeline for when that is. He's just saying, I'm holding this piece of property for that. To speak to the hotel feasibility study that Bobby mentioned a few times, I know it was said that our community couldn't support a nice hotel. Tara, Chris, Chuck, Debbie, y'all have all seen the feasibility study that the community paid for. And from 2017 to 2024, the big takeaways are that it now says that instead of a 72-room quality-brand limited-service hotel, our community can support a 90-room premium-brand hotel, limited-service hotel. And just to be clear, what that means is three examples of a premium-brand limited hotel that were identified, that had been contacted and said they were willing to put a hotel in our community, was Hilton, and their brand would be Hampton Inn and Suites. Marriott Fairfield, and their brand, Marriott's brand would be the Fairfield Inn and Suites. And IHG's would be the Holiday Inn Express and Suites, all which are nice hotels. And just to remind you too, we only gave 16 different entities to the hotel feasibility study. So, they talked to some of our biggest companies, they talked to the rent department about all the tournaments they were hosting here. They didn't even talk to all of our employers. And we have over 53 industries and businesses in Stevens County, which is another misconception that was presented at the planning and zoning meeting, that we don't have any industry in Tacoa. We most certainly do have industry in Tacoa, and I'd be happy to talk to anybody that believes differently at any time and take you to visit some of our industries. And just to remind you guys as well, going back to the housing that they're proposing on this PUD, when ASI CEO spoke to y'all in September of 2023, he reminded you that our community missed out on their last expansion simply because we don't have the workforce, because we don't have the workforce housing that we need in our community to support that. That's what Bobby's PUD out here is trying to get us, some more workforce housing that we desperately need, and not just for our industries, our government employees, our teachers, our hospital employees, they all need to live here. I've said this a million times, and it's true. You don't have to take my word for it. You can look, look it up. Companies whose employees live in their community have higher retention rates, and that's what we want in our community. We want our employees to live here and work here and not go to another community to take the same job just because they don't have the commute anymore. We want them to have a place to live. We want them to be here. And growth is coming to northeast Georgia, and this is a way for us to get ahead of that and have planning and have nice developments planned. So, I just wanted to say that, and I'll also say, just as a reminder, last year, our office worked 34 active projects in Tacoa Stevens County. Three of those were hospitality projects. Since y'all have had this last feasibility study done, we regularly talk to developers who want to put a hotel in our community, but they're not going to do it. They're not going to commit to coming if the zoning is not right. And so, we have to take care of that first. We have to get a piece of property that's zoned correctly for that purpose. But the 34 projects should show you the activity that we're seeing here, and the number one thing they're all worried about is workforce. They want to see our housing developments. They want to know what's coming. And so, this would be another housing development that we could show, that we were trying to address that issue in our community. So, lastly, I just want to remind you that planning and zoning can't be dictated by emotion. You have to go on the facts. You have to think there are 26,000 people in this community that you represent. The only, zoning has never been for us to dictate what our neighbors do on the property they're paying for. It's for us to make sure that our community is growing in a way that's, that's, that we all want it to and that we're not being a nuisance to our neighbors, and that's, that's what zoning and planning is about. It's not about who can come and scream the loudest because they don't want something to happen, okay? And so, with that, I'll just say, if you have any more questions, we'll be here, and I know Bobby is willing to answer, and so are we. So, thank you for your time and your consideration.
Thanks, Brittany.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else wishing to speak in favor of this item? If you'll state your name and address for the record.
My name is Julie Payson. I live at 37 Boulevard, and as you know, I am president of our Tacoa Stevens County Chamber of Commerce. So, thank you for allowing us the opportunity to be here this morning. First of all, I want to echo what's already been said by Commissioner Wright. Thank you so much for choosing to invest in our community. I've watched the planning and zoning meeting in full as it was aired, and so, there were questions raised about this whole project, you know, who are these people? Do they live here? It doesn't matter if investors live in our community or not. If we have investors in our community that want to invest and develop, bring it on. I mean, this has nothing to do with where the developer who is looking at purchasing the land lives. We're, we're excited that outside people want to come in and invest in our community. As we have now met three times about this property, about potential developers, and as Brittany said, the first two had not yet purchased the property, but we didn't want $350,000-valued single-family homes, and that was a number of years ago, so they would be worth a whole lot more now. We didn't want that there. Then, we didn't want a developer who was talking to Aldi. We heard that. Okay, here's our third pass at a 14-acre piece of property. What, what are we going to do with that? I mean, I understand we don't want it in our backyard. You know, that's just everywhere you go. We discussed this on the bypass when we had that conversation, that everybody is all about go Tacoa Stevens County, let's grow, let's, you know, whatever, but I don't really want it next door to me. Another question that was raised, well, who are going to, who's going to live in this, who's going to buy these townhomes? Who's going to live here? Well, the people that can afford to buy the townhomes will purchase them just like anybody could come and purchase the home right next door to any of us, and we don't get a vote or a say on who purchases the home next door to us. And so, I think some of these questions, I understand that everybody doesn't understand the process. It's my understanding that this is just a very first step of let's get this rezoned. Bobby has been very clear that he, and he has from the get-go, the very first contact he made was to Brittany Ivy and myself, and sat down with us. This is the only time this has ever happened in my 10 years in this role, and Brittany will testify to it too. And even when Tim Martin was here, we didn't get a call from a potential developer to say, what does your community need? What are the things that your community is lacking that we can bring to the table? How awesome is that? Usually, they come in, they buy the land, they do whatever they want to with it, because it's their property. And so, Bobby has been from the get-go wanting to do what is right for our community. As has been mentioned, a hotel's not coming here if they don't think they can be successful. So, this is just, we've got to, as Brittany said, we've got to look at the big picture of what to look at the big picture of what is best for our community and let me clarify one thing when we talk about and the number one issue with our industry and manufacturers here locally is that they cannot find housing for their employees here and or their employees cannot potential employees cannot find housing so therefore if their employees are living outside of our community and working here but their kids are playing baseball in another community or their kids are going to school and having functions in other community or they're in another community they are eventually gonna find a job in that community because that's where they live because we don't have enough housing we've been saying this for years and we're excited about the progress that we've made in this effort to have more housing um but I I guess I'm just like if you don't want anything if the people who are not interested in having this developed don't want any development buy the land pull your money buy the land and then you can control what goes there but to be right in the heart of our community and saying we we don't want three hundred and fifty thousand now probably four hundred thousand four hundred fifty you know whatever they would be worth now we didn't want that we didn't want commercial retail now we're saying we don't want that what is it that what is it that we want what is it that we're gonna allow I mean we've got to again look at the big picture of what's best for our community not necessarily and I would say this if it's going in across the street from my house we live in the city limits I'm completely familiar with having commercial development right across the street from me so I understand that and it's and we all have the right to voice our opinion but I'm here to just say can we remember our community as a whole this is our first step we've got a developer willing to have a conversation when we approve all the plans and do that let's fine tune that but if we keep saying no 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 I I just feel like you know when people invest in our community whether it's residential or commercial or whatever it's their property so I I don't understand I guess the amount of um conversation that we keep having we keep having to come back to the table like somebody tell me what they want to do with that piece of property or if they don't want to do anything then they need to buy it and hang on to it pull your money make it a park I mean whatever it is you want to do but we just don't have that right to say no 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 what's left and I wanted to say one other thing about um our workforce housing because this has been totally misconstrued workforce housing is housing that our employees in the community can buy and and that is not income-based housing we are not looking for more you know income-based housing we have more in our county and we've discussed this before than any other county northeast Georgia Housing Authority Stevens County has more public housing than our other counties which was based on how many um who we had working in our community back in the day that's when that was um established so no one in leadership in our community is looking to have more income-based housing and and it you can't just say you're gonna do this and do that that's not how that works so for anybody who's concerned about that you you can't do that when you're taking this route and you're if you're gonna do income-based housing you have to take a whole new pathway for that and that is not what's going on here so I want to clarify the terms sometimes people are not not sure what workforce housing what that term is referring to it's talking about anybody working in our community that needs housing so it I mean it could be my family your family any anybody we don't have enough housing here and so we're thrilled when somebody chooses to invest in our community as Bobby has and ask what do we need it it's real clear I mean the professionals from out of town have done the study the feasibility study that all of y'all have seen it's so greatly increased from twenty seventeen we are prime for that there's been comments made I don't you know I moved here um you know get away from Atlanta I grew up in Atlanta I'm fully aware of what Atlanta inside the perimeter looked like when I was growing up and what it looks like today so it's it's vastly different and that's gonna happen everywhere you are so if you if you don't choose that then find a big piece of property and stay on your land and enjoy the privacy of that but you can't be in a in a town and expect that progress is not gonna take place
Guys, guys, we're not gonna we're not gonna do this.
Well, I need you to over ten minutes.
Sir, I've got somebody timing. We're we're not gonna do this we're not gonna be disrespectful I will give you all the same courtesy we're not gonna do this. Sir, we're not gonna do this.
No.
Don't we are running according to our meeting rules we are not gonna do this we're gonna be courteous.
So let me just wrap up by saying the people in leadership in our community are we live here we have I have children in our school system we live here we want what is best for our community Brittany and I aren't getting a kickback on any of this this is our job to help develop our our community and grow our businesses grow our um grow the quality of life improve the quality of life and everybody doesn't agree on what that looks like but we have to understand we have to make the best decision if we're gonna grow this is not gonna be Gwinnett County this is not gonna be Atlanta but development is gonna take place we know that Atlanta and Charlotte are are growing the metro area so it we're not gonna look like Atlanta but development's gonna happen and so as Brittany said we need to be prepared and be proactive and not reactive and so that's what we're here um to encourage we thank you for listening and for doing your homework and always thinking of what's best for our community thank you guys.
Thanks Julie.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else wishing to speak in favor of this request? Sir, if you'll give your name and address for the record.
Scott Stroud, three forty-nine Robin Circle I'm also the chairman of the planning commission at the time um I didn't know whether speaking this point or the other sometimes I just have comments that I'd like to give to the board and I thought this would be appropriate point.
We appreciate that.
Yeah, I think um the three there were three areas that we had concerns about and I thank the developer for showing up today I know they didn't have a chance to show up at our meeting and had some family emergencies but um so that's the reason we tabled that we had questions that we were not able to answer but that being said we did develop some uh some comments that that I'd like to give personally not as not speaking on behalf of the whole planning commission but number one I think Chuck touched on it I think the access to this site um needs to have some oversight um I think this these are city streets access in the county parcel and to my knowledge neither the county nor the city issues driveway permits so there is no sort of oversight for the county as far as what the access and the entrances would look like so I mean my suggestion would be to like Chuck said to hire a requested transportation engineer do a study on the entrance design a study to DOT standards this is a commercial site there'd be a lot of I mean I know he says not a lot of traffic but there's gonna be if there's twenty-six houses and uh you know hotel and all that there's gonna be some traffic so I don't know if there'd be D cell lanes needed or um you know maybe even site distance issues there I know there's that curve on Skyline so we need that to be safe for the county and for everybody involved so that'd be my number one suggestion on that uh number two would be the um the runoff I think he's already kind of touched on that and I know they have a civil engineer working on that this the county does have pretty robust um regulations on detention design I would just request that you make sure that those are implemented as far as this project and I assume they would be and then the last one would be the density uh you know fifteen units per acre and I know they've got it phased I know they're not requesting they said they won't build a hundred and sixty-five but I think if you prove it based on this that you know there is that possibility so I think if you if we could or you know if it's possible to cap it at what the site plan shows or some reasonable bracket of that so that uh you know I like the site plan I think it looks good uh but you know if something fell through and then would I think that whole thing filled up with houses or duplexes or townhouses would probably not good I know they would have to come back my understanding is any change from this site plan they would have to come back before y'all anyway but I think I think that would be a reasonable request to cap it at you know thirty or whatever the number is there so all right thank y'all for your time.
Thank you Mr. Dow.
Thank you bud, appreciate it.
Is there anyone?
First of all, the P U D also has a two-year timeframe, right?
To begin construction.
Yeah.
Yes, sir.
And if it doesn't get started construction in?
It reverts to its previous zoning designation. Yes, sir, and that's that's automatic that that wouldn't require action of the board. So yes, if construction is not started on a P U D within two years it does revert to its previous zoning designation and that does not require action of the board. Sir? Yeah, it's previous yeah so so it would let's say it gets rezoned to P U D it would revert to residential single i- if construction did not begin in two years now with that being said the board does have the ability to grant I believe in the ordinance it says a one-year extension so that that is something they could do but generally speaking yes it's a two-year timeframe to actually start breaking ground on the property. All right, we'll go ahead.
Sorry about that, I didn't want to.
We'll go ahead and continue the public hearing um is there anyone else wishing to speak in favor of this item? Anyone wishing to speak in favor? Is there anyone wishing to speak in opposition to this item? Yes ma'am, if you'll come up and give your name and address for the record, yes ma'am.
My name is Tammy Wilson, I live at twenty-nine Parkway Drive which is directly across from this piece of property I live on the corner of Park of Skyline and Parkway. The question's about can you support a motel or a hotel or whatever I don't feel you can because I live there we have people who are walking up and down our streets who are homeless our crime rate has increased and I think the fact that you put commercial property there you put a hotel there in the middle of what everything behind it is residential and when we bought our property we bought it as residential and everything I have grandchildren I have kids in the school system I have grandkids that are not in the school system and I go to all those different places you have property out on the bypass and I think you have another piece of property off of Miles Road or something and I feel like it would be better for the community and for the county if you develop that property rather than trying to bring in a whole bunch of traffic because that curve right there at Skyline and Parkway is extremely dangerous you don't get a hundred feet well maybe more than a hundred feet but not a tenth of a mile down the road and you've got a red light I have a hard time getting out of my driveway because my driveway opens on the skyline I can't get you I mean I have a hard time seeing people coming around that curve and everything yeah I'm a little emotional about it you're talking about my property.
No, it's I'm just gonna make a general announcement and I'm gonna let you finish just everybody direct their comments at us this is not about a back and forth we are the decision makers.
Okay, that's fine well in that case I have caring kids and kids that live with me if you develop the property out on seventeen on bypass you're gonna have better access to bigger communities where people are working I work in Tacloban I have worked in Demarest I have worked in Gainesville you think I'm still gonna come home to Tacloban because I don't have to deal with that mess down there and I don't want that mess across the street from my house you're gonna have to have a retention pond I don't want a retention pond across from my driveway that's gonna create mosquitoes and everything else I don't want the crime that's gonna come with it the homeless people like what you see standing at Ollie's and at Walmart and everywhere else that are begging for food and who are hanging out around those areas you're gonna have you're gonna bring that into a residential community I was at the city meeting when the people who were talking about the city they were talking about the whole fourteen thirteen acre lot and the reason the city turned it down was exactly because of the reasons that we're still against it they ask us what we want you wanna put a vaporhood over there a single-family homes that are decent homes you don't have people who can pay eighteen hundred dollars a month in rent working in Tacloban I can't pay six hundred dollars a month on my own with everything else I'd have to pay and everything and that's to me it upsets me that you've got a little piece of county property who's gonna police it is the county gonna police it because it's county property is the city gonna police it because it's right in the middle of the city you've got one little piece of eleven acres sitting out in county property surrounded by the city that's gonna create a jurisdictional problem for police because the people in the county are gonna come bother the people in the city and stuff but you put you can't sustain if you've got twenty-six townhomes over there you've got it probably at least forty-six families and stuff because it's just gonna generate that meaning you've got two to three cars per household and just the townhomes alone are gonna generate an extra hundred two hundred you know cars then you go and put in a hotel that people are coming in and out day and night and having parties and everything else and people rent those Holiday Inn Expresses and Hiltons and everything else to have parties and to have meetings to have conferences and you're gonna generate a whole lot more traffic than what you think you're gonna generate and stuff I fight the traffic every day just down Skyline I've gone down Abington a time or two and I think it's a one-way street right you doesn't it dead end and stuff how you gonna get people in and out of there I you know sewer wise they had a gentleman at the planning board commission who sit who worked for the sewer and said we can't sustain that I mean there's a lot of different issues that look really good on paper but they don't really work in real life that's all I got to say.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, sir, if you'll come up and give your name and address for the record.
This but I will give one of my titles I'm Bishop Charles W. Wilson I pastor a church in the area it's been a long time getting here Mr. Wright already knows that he knows that I was an evangelist for a long time traveling around between South Carolina and Georgia but I am happy to be here lived in the area for seven eight years now and my wife spoke and we don't always agree on everything just like every marriage couple does but I will give you some facts two of the three people that support it have nothing to do with this area except that they're on a board or represent businesses which I am pro-business I made my wealth way before I came and became a minister on developing I was a structural engineer and I already know that Skyline Drive where you want to put that entrance will need to be widened it twenty-nine Parkway corners that that is my property so are you gonna take it from my property are you gonna need me to find another place to live because when I moved in here I was planning on retiring there because I'm sixty almost sixty-one so my plans are irrelevant for the greater good I guess but at the same time I would like to see something go in there that's reasonable I don't know if this plan is reasonable or not I don't even know if we can have the businesses in there and this drawing looks pretty but it doesn't a- address the facts of the entrances have to be to accommodate the hotel Skyline Drive and that area right around that curve is the most dangerous part my wife was telling you the truth there's been a lot of times I started pulling out I had to hit the brakes so I fly around that corner I know when I am up and round midnight on Friday and Saturday night doing whatever I'm doing in my study in my house I have heard cars drag racing up and down that road by the time the police get there they're gone I have a grandson who I'm raising and a granddaughter who I'm raising do attend Stevens County Middle and High School I have invested interest in this county in this city I have moved out of DC for a reason I'm not saying that this is gonna turn into Atlanta like somebody has already said or Washington DC and I hope not Washington DC my brother's moving to Georgia I want a place for him to come to. My brother's moving to Georgia. I want a place for him to come to. He's tired of up there. But when you have that intersection plus the new intersection that's going in, and no one can answer whether it's gonna affect my property. I hear, "No, it's not. Yes, it is." But me being a structural engineer, that's gonna affect somehow. And if the road is, I don't know about this other road, but if it's narrow, how you gonna, you got another 60 houses going in there plus the hotel businesses. Traffic will be up greatly on that one road alone. And does it empty out on a stoplight? I think there's a stoplight in that area, but I'm not sure. But I know at Skyline Drive, there's been plenty of accidents there at Big A Road, Skyline. Matter of fact, they knocked out the power because somebody hit the telephone pole one night. And I've had a wreck there, totaled a truck of mine. But it doesn't really, I mean, we need to really be thinking that. And then this pretty picture up here doesn't show me where the retention ponds going? It just, where you would like to put the buildings and streets? And all I'm trying to tell you is all of this in there is not, these answers aren't answered. The traffic problem, property problem for me, nobody's answering those questions. So I support table on this until the questions are answered at least. Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate the feedback.
Is there anyone else wishing to speak in opposition to this item?
Yeah.
Yes, sir, if you'll give your name and address for the record.
I'm McLean, 26 Thomas Street, which is off Skyline Drive. I'm not against development. I think that's good. But I think I got some concerns with this. My wife actually worked for Development Authority. I used to be on the Planning Commission. So, but I think there's some concerns that I'd wanna mention that we need to look at. I think the city, county, and state are, should get involved in all of this. For example, the Skyline Drive, uh, the curve, which has been mentioned, that needs to be, I don't know what you'd do to it, but it's dangerous. My wife was driving up there the other day. Car comes flying up there, slammed on his brakes, and we turned there at the street right past it. They blew the horn at her. So you got crazy people doing something like that all the time, but I don't know how to solve that. Another thing is the state would have to get involved is the turns, is the signal light, stop light coming out of Belks and that area. It needs a turn signal. I think about a fourth of the people don't know how to turn their blinkers on. So that is, that's a problem. It needs a turn signal there so people would know when to turn and when to not. I'm real hesitant. I haven't had an accident there. What are you talking about putting a road through the green space, which would come out on Addington Drive? I don't know how to solve that problem since the traffic light is on below there. Unless they could put, the state could put a traffic signal there that is synchronized with the one past it. In other words, when it turns green, both of them turn green. I don't know whether that's possible or not, but that's just a concern I would have on that. One thing, my property, it really doesn't border it except right on the corner where it comes. But I've got some neighbors that live up there above me. To me, a business of that big needs to put chain-linked fence around it, and it might help some of the homeless people from coming over into the, actually, those woods there and spending the night. That's a problem in that area. So I'm just giving you some problems that I say. I don't know how you would deal with them or the state would deal with them. Of course, the city's gonna have to do something probably on Addington Drive too, since that's a city street. And, uh, so like I said, I'm not against development, but I think we've got too many things in that area. I'm for a hotel. We need a hotel, a nice one. But when you start building houses, apartments, and all that, that's gonna overload that particular, uh, partial. So that's another concern I would have. It's just too many people in one place.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Is there anyone else wishing to speak in opposition to this item? Yes, sir. James, can you bring him the mic?
No, sir, we'll give you the mic.
You don't even have to stand up, sir, if you don't want to. We just want it so it's-
I'm Karen King. I live 358 Skyline Drive. And, uh, this makes my about third meeting about the community around me. It's been, uh, kinda frustrating. But I'll say this. I like Mr. McLean and not against development. I'm not a chairman of any department or anything. I'm just a old local boy that retired. And, uh, my home, that's, that's what I've worked for. Property here. I know the previous owners. Got a lot of respect for them. I'd say I ain't got no respect for this gentleman here. This wanted to develop it. But, uh, it's mighty nice of him to grant a green space over there on Addington Drive. I can't see traffic that's gonna be attempting to get on Big A Road there at Junior's. I can't see that because the only way you can go is one way without getting run over. Now, it done been one death right across the road this past summer. Several wrecks there at Bales. And then if they turn and go through the shopping center, buy the laundry, and try to catch that light, how long you think that people that owns that parking lot there is gonna put up with that? Because that, you know, that cuts folks off from getting to quality food and buffet place, other things. Long story short, everybody's talking about hotel. That's supposed to be in phase two. Is that right? Okay. Phase two. We don't know when phase two is gonna kick in, and we may not get somebody to say, "Sure, I wanna build a motel there." We've had good motels in Tacloban. Had one down there now on Big A Road. And now it's nothing but a car wash. It was a sheriff's. We've got this one down here. We've got a notorious one up here, and I think it's closed down on Curry Street. Couple of others. But sure, I hate that people, when they come to Tacloban to play a Little League baseball tournament, they gotta stay in Livonia or Carnia. That's not right. But the bad thing is, you put a big hotel, motel in here, it ain't gonna be able to keep up the overhead lapse in times of things going on. That's what's happened. Don't have the revenue to keep it going. And, uh, as far as industry, you know, there must have been a lot said, and I'm guilty, at that planning meeting, that there wasn't nobody else there except the ones that were speaking in opposition to the presentation. But it all got back to these folks, because they know a lot about what we said. That's fine and good, because it's supposed to be out and open. As far as industry, we have industry here. But I think they said earlier in the, uh, comments that, uh, rent or, was it rent or payments, were gonna be in around $1,800 a month. I don't see it. Got regular people working here now that can't, can't make it. And it's gonna take some show enough professional folks to come in, fill these higher-ranking jobs in these industries that we're having come in to us, you know? Uh, we had this battery plant down here at Avalon. I think their bunny died or something, because I ain't seen no drum beating going on. You know, the recycle thing? Uh, I, I just, uh, I don't see how it can accommodate people, the actual workforce can accommodate living in, being able to afford that. I wanna refer back to a situation high in my own time.
You're fine, sir.
Years ago, we had Coach America. We had Webco, several other strong industries. Tacloban Stevens County was a hub of industry. Had folks coming into this county to work. There was a road cut, cut through from Collins Road, Stevens Drive, over to Skyline. Apartments were built, duplex apartments, nice. Um, engineer-type, professional-type folks, they lived in them apartments. Some of the higher-up, uh, labor worked there. They started raising families. And then they outgrew that. So they, they went over here in Pine Valley or some other residential area, bought a home, moved out. All right, so then another group moves in. Well, over the years and with the depletion of the industry that was sort of helping them things, those apartments thrive, it sort of down, started going downhill. You have a lot of, um, a domino effect of where people that own them, uh, they, they're not having the people to pay rent and stuff. And so they're being faced with problems and, and, and they're being destroyed by fights and broke sheet rock wonders and stuff. Long story short, they get out from under their ownership of that, and then they sell to somebody else. And it's been a domino effect. But now it's down to a crust. You got, you got problems on Stevens Drive. Uh, I hate to see this gentleman come in here, spend all this big money to build these townhomes and, and, uh, houses, uh, and not even think about a, a hotel or some kind of commercial property. I hate to see him come in here and spend that, and then that start going downhill. Because history does repeat itself. He can't guarantee that that's how that's gonna turn out. He can't guarantee that that motel will be built. I can't either. I hope it is. I'd love to see one. But, and as far as that, Mr. Wright, you know, when you bought that property down there behind Tractor Supply, he was gonna develop all three tracks, folks raised enough cane. You was kind enough and considered enough that you designated one of them tracks as a not-to-be-developed area so that we wouldn't have all this walk-through and all this, uh, sleeping in the woods, homeless stuff. Just cut down. Clear it up over there. Have the machine go in, cut the undergrowth. Looks good, and I appreciate you doing that. But before that, about the back doors, Tractor Supply, and if y'all check, I'm sorry.
You can go ahead and finish.
There was folks in the woods. Said he had to vacate them. I'm not gonna keep painting a grim picture about that because I just don't wanna see it happen again. I don't wanna see accidents on Skyline. I live on the straight part of Skyline. And from Stevens Drive, where they come out of that curve there at Ms. Andrews' house, going up toward like where Sandra Holbrook's own, owns property, or Sandra Childs'. It's a straight shot, and buddy, they put the hammer down. And I was, uh, when Jimmy Mize was police chief, I said, "Jimmy, how about parking some of these police cars you got down here on Pond Street that y'all satellite? How about parking one or two of them in my front yard? Maybe it's slowing down." "Oh, I can't do that." I said, "Well, you got this thing that tells how fast folks is going. Put that down there at that power pole." He did. It didn't help. People, and posted, asked for posted, you know, uh, speed limit, post signs. Don't help. Uh, they some that just like to fly up through there, and it's dangerous because we got school buses that run through there twice a day. Long story short, more power to this gentleman. Bring it on. Bring on the industry. I'm ready for, see folks prosper here in Tacloban Stevens County. But, you know, I'm just kinda doubtful about it. And I'm sorry for any tensions this morning, but you can paint all the pretty pictures you want. That's all I got to say.
Thank you, sir.
Thank y'all.
James, can you move the mic back to the podium, please?
Is there anyone else wishing to speak in opposition? Is there anyone else wishing to speak in opposition?
Sir, would you like to offer a response to your afforded rebuttal, so to speak?
Thank you. First of all, we value each and every comment respected citizens brought out. And just studying this in this last hour, the talks we have, and the biggest issue, I know we have some disagreements on some things, but most of the people believe the hotel is a good fit there. Secondly, the most important topic is discussed here is the traffic. Now, the way I understood and the way I'm reading these citizens' comments, even without any development, I think in my opinion, whatever you decide to vote today, but it looks like there needs to be an improvement, like a speed bumps or more signs, to avoid any problems which is happening so far. So regardless of today's outcome, I think that needs to be done anyway. Because there is no reason in our residential street that these things are happening, basically. Secondly, on the traffic, I like to say is, yes, this development will not be good as a commercial component if you do a supermarket, if you do a pharmacy, if you do a gas stations, and nuisance business like web shops or pub shops or nightclubs or liquor stores, which brings constantly traffic every hour, in and out, and bring all kinds of things. But on the commercial, we are focusing more on a hotel. And like I said, yes, hotels will bring conferences, meetings. Like today, we are like 30 people here, and there's 30 cars. Fine. But it's not constantly moving. It's not constantly in and out. They came, they parked, they attend the meetings. So my point is, this is the least-traffic project anybody can have. So my point is, this is the least traffic project anybody can have in this particular parcel. So I like to echo on that part, that please consider that. Secondly, on the housing, on townhomes, and if you notice that we are also showing cottage houses, which I believe when we were on a conference call with Macside, this is Toccoa with the community, older people and retirement people. So those also we like to propose as cottage homes, which can easily blend within residential surrounding communities. Thirdly, the most important thing on the townhomes we are proposing, and if this gets approved, usually sometimes townhomes does not have a ground floor bedrooms. Usually they only have upstairs, two to three bedrooms. But when we were going and discussing and studying the overall reports, the feasibility and the market and the population here, I was talking to the architecture, if this gets approved, we like to design something that have a bedroom on the ground floor. With that, it can be either a community can have, if it is fifty-five and up, they can have that preference, and then upstairs bedroom. So I just wanted to focus on that. Secondly, townhomes is the least maintenance, you know? Anything we design, we like to do it that it looks aesthetically so nice. And either it is in a form of grass growing, people are not maintaining, townhomes, communities are well-designed and well-maintained properties. So those things. Now, also brought up whether we live in community or not, but I like to say with the, the only reason we like Toccoa when we came in first year, with such a nice welcoming approach from city, county, everybody around. So that was our, and for that is the reason, every time we came in, we bought some, there's some investment. Now, with that said, that whether we live in a community or not, I like to tell that this, whenever we drive eighty miles from Alpharetta here, I don't know, but it's the very positive vibrations here. It's a different air. It's a different feeling. The environment here is so good. So my partner, Jeremy, he loves golfing. And in fact, we were last week looking some housing in Quahy Clubs, because he loves to play golf, you know, every week. So with that said, that's a long shot, but I'm just saying that, yes, we like to do that perspective also, and we were just discussing that the way we are doing our investments, maybe next three, four years will be there. So that's just, I wanted to put that point. Thirdly, on the hotel, I like to, I know, commend Brittany and the Christian, that the people they choose, Highland Group, that the best possible feasibility report you can ever get. Even in Atlanta Market, this is a hundred million dollar hotel, or a twelve million dollar this project. Highland Group, I'm sure they must have, our county must have a hefty bill for that. But their report, their analysis is just unbelievable, and it works. So when they say that bring a good brand hotel, that means even if somebody tries to do a lower type brand hotel, it will not work. So now, one of the resident point out that, are you going to that stage or not? That's a good question. There is no guarantees. But if we have this, then you can start planning. And besides us, if I understand it right, from Christian and Brittany, with this new feasibility report, a lot of developers are showing interest. So with that said, yes, we cannot give you any, like a firm guarantee, but this is our intention to do that. And in order to bring people, we have to work with community and the whole group to make sure this happens. Now, we are not putting here multifamily and any one-bedroom homes. And also, I want to point, which cannot be as a reference, that on Skyline, when we bought this property, there was a house already there, 125 Skyline. Right? And we got a call from our sheriff department that there are homeless people moving around and squatters and this like that. So with that said, immediately, we didn't have anything to do on this property until it gets approved zoning and all that. But as soon as we found out that, we took immediate action and get the whole house done now. You know, we clear the property to make sure that nobody moves around, and this area is safely handled. Another thing is, you know, when a good development happens, less homeless people around will be there. So if you build a low-tier hotel and low subsidized housing, you know, then these are all probabilities. But the development we try to bring, it's, I don't see any reason why it should not get approved. And even if after this approved, you know, we like to work closely with Christian and his team to make sure this fits. And from day one, we told Brittany and Christian and everybody, if something you guys don't like, we don't want to do that. We want to be on same page and to progress further in any, either we do this multifamily project out around. In terms of timeline, just for you guys, since you mentioned in the beginning that we invested in three, four properties here. On the industrial land, we are way ahead of a schedule. That property should not be starting anything till another March or next quarter. But we are way ahead of schedule and start clearing, and a lot of planning is already in place. So this gives our idea, our commitment, what kind of people we are. We don't like to just to, just to get approved. We value each and every citizen's comments, and we try our best to fulfill that to the best extent.
I'm gonna cut you off, because we're over time already.
Not at all, thank you again, and appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Okay, the-
Sir, it's closed. You may speak with him directly. It's probably a question-
I just want to know if the city's gonna be able to bring the water and sewer.
So to answer that question, I'm looking at an email from PTS Incorporated. The email has been sent to all the commissioners. It says, please be advised that based on the information provided by the City of Toccoa, adequate water and sanitary sewer is available to serve the proposed mixed-use development consisting of a hotel, single-family home, townhomes, and commercial office space. If you have any questions or need more information, please let us know. Sincerely, John Phillips, President of PTS. So that question's been answered.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, Chuck.
All right, the land use public hearing is closed.
Number five. Are y'all trying to test me this morning?
Well, do we want to move into the regular meeting?
I thought you, I thought we had to read an alcohol license at number five. Okay, that's what was throwing me off.
Yeah, no, it's just a renewal. We're good to go.
Good. All right, we will move into the regular meeting. Thank you all for being here. I appreciate everybody's input. I think we had some questions answered that needed to be answered this morning, some information given, so I appreciate that. If you haven't silenced your cellphone, I would greatly appreciate that. We have an addition to the agenda. We've already approved that. I went out of order because I was confused. But Chuck, do you mind leading us in prayer this morning?
And then shall we say the pledge?
Yes.
Absolutely.
It's eight AM on Friday, nine AM.
Let us stand and pray. Father, we love you today. We count a great honor and privilege to bow before you, dear God. Father, we thank you for this great community and each citizen represented here today. We thank you for these that have come out, Father, to express their opinions, dear God. And Father, we thank you for the leadership here in this community. Dear God, we thank you for how you've blessed this community over the decades. And Father, we just pray, hedge protection around this community. We pray that you'll continue to bless this great community, this great state, and this great nation that we all have the freedom to live in. Father, I pray that you grant us wisdom as we make decisions, and I pray that going forward, everything that we do and say would first and foremost bring honor and glory to your name. In Jesus Christ, we pray this prayer. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
There are directions to the minutes from the last meeting.
Well, we'll have the minutes on our first agenda in January.
Why is it on this agenda? No old business this morning. I believe I'm right on that. New business. We'll start with number one.
Item number one, rezoning request from Nell Garland, 1220 Coffin Road, Toccoa. Parcel 021D005. Action needed on this item.
Motion to approve.
Second. All those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item number two, variance request from Wayne and Janice Seegers, as discussed in the public hearing.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed?
Item number three, variance request from Edith Kimsey, Youngblood Estate, as discussed in the public hearing.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item number four, rezoning request from AK New Ventures LLC, as discussed in the public hearing.
Motion to approve.
There a second?
There's not, but I have a different motion.
I'll second the motion for purposes of discussion, if you want to address.
Yeah, I'm definitely in favor of the development and things that are going on in this property. All I would ask is that we do do a formal traffic study, just to ease the concerns, and that we see some type of concern with the traffic, just so that we can see formally. Brittany, Brittany, I'm sorry.
This is rezoning.
I'm in favor of the rezoning. I'm not, I'm just asking if we could have a formal traffic study so that we could ease some concerns about how we're gonna flow in and out of the property. I'm not opposed to the rezoning in any way, shape, or form.
So we've got a-
We're not approving this site plan today.
We understand, okay, I won't, I won't say nothing else. That's fine.
Okay, there's a motion and a second.
Commissioner, I will just say, if you do want to do a traffic study and require that as a condition on the property, you can require that whatever the outcome of that is be incorporated into the plan review process.
Thank you.
I would think they would do that anyway. I can't imagine Hilton is gonna put a hotel up there, and they're not gonna look at the traffic, at parking, and all that. I just can't even imagine that they would do that.
Mr. Shaw, are you good with the traffic study?
Can I say something quickly? Just by our discussion, the people we are talking about, they do a so much deep-depth study, we're full of that. And they also look at all the safety concerns. Definitely going forward, when that happens, traffic study. And that's also our priority also, you know, to make sure that it is good overall. And that's quick, you know, they will not put anywhere, those things are dangerous. I'm just wondering to find out that that should be fine, you know?
So you're good with the traffic study being-
We can do it when we go in further out in the year.
Okay.
Should we put that in your motion?
So there's-
I'm not making a motion.
Okay. So this is an opportunity for us to talk as a board. And when we start involving everybody else, we're gonna, it's, that's not what this purpose is for, is for us. So we've got a motion and a second on the floor. All those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
To approve.
Yep.
Aye. Aye.
Motion carries.
One thing to clarify, was that approval with the condition of a traffic study?
It is.
Okay, I just want to make sure the record, the minutes are very clear and that the application is handled. And then any traffic study that would reveal whatever modifications are necessary, like any cell, any cell, whatever, do so.
And if those are, and if that, so in the motion, it would be conditional upon a traffic study and any additional requirements that are designated by that traffic study would need to be adopted. That would be the motion. Are you okay with that?
I think they're gonna do it anyway.
I know, but let's just put it in the record to assure-
If it makes everybody feel better, okay.
Let's just put it in the motion to assure everyone. All right, moving on to number five.
Item number five-
Now, just, so you got the recorded votes?
Got it down.
Got you, okay.
Item number five is an alcoholic beverage license renewal application for Royal Food Number Twenty-Eight. It has been reviewed by the county clerk and found sufficient.
And to go back, I'm sorry, to go back, Commissioner Wright was a nay on that.
No, I was a yes for the contention, or contingent on the traffic study.
Okay, thank you. I'm sorry.
That's why I was clarifying that.
And I appreciate that. I'm sorry. So, number five, and I apologize. Motion to approve from Ms. Whitlock and all those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. We have no invoices or quotes over ten thousand, any administrator or finance report, any department reports, any commissioner reports. I would just remind everybody that we have a reception for Judge Glenda Ernest, Sheriff Randy Shirley, Commissioner Dennis Bell, and Deputy Magistrate Judge Chip Prather. And it's on the nineteenth Thursday at the Star Theater at five thirty. And we would love for people to come by and thank them for their service, so. Any matters from citizens that they have signed up?
No, ma'am.
Any need for executive session?
No, ma'am.
No, ma'am. Okay. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Motion to adjourn.
Do I have a second?
Deputies wait for court.
All those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.